Amy Berry. Somebody in the way back can find Amy Berry in the lobby, I'd appreciate it. We need her up here to get going. We do have well over a quorum, so we'll be getting started very momentarily. Audio's working well. Good evening, folks. Good to see you all here tonight. My name is Paul Samino. I'm your elected town moderator. And I want to welcome you all to this special town meeting. I have been informed by our town clerk that a quorum of over 100 registered voters is present, and therefore this town meeting will come to order. As your moderator, I am responsible for the oversight and conduct of this town meeting. Again, I'm pleased to see you all here tonight, especially those that are attending town meeting for the first time. And indeed, if you are a first-time town meeting attendee and you decide to come to the microphone tonight, please let us know it's your first time attending so we can give you some sincere, the sincere, the sincere recognition you deserve. Tonight, six volunteer tellers have been appointed and duly sworn by the clerk should it become necessary to count undeclared votes. The tellers are Anne Shea, Scott Navaroli, Kate Battles, Sally Hegarty, Tracy Navaroli, and Michelle Pulecki. In addition, we do have an overflow room, which is in the auditorium where we normally would have this meeting. For those that arrive late or, you know, when we run out of seats in this room. I didn't know whether we'd be needing that room tonight. It seems like we definitely will be. And there is a deputy moderator appointed for that room to moderate and recognize speakers over there. Roger Challen, most of you know, is in that role tonight. In New England, town meetings serve as the legislative branch of town government. Town meeting decides whether to appropriate money to run the town, considers whether to create, revise, or remove local town statutes, known as bylaws. Southborough operates with an open town meeting, meaning that every registered voter in this hall can vote on all matters before the town meeting. A warrant is issued in advance of town meeting for voters to be forewarned about the time, place, and substance of the matters to be considered. The warrant before us tonight is a light green-colored document that I hope you picked up walking in. It has a total of 10 articles to be considered. Unless otherwise determined by law or town by law, the conduct of town meeting is governed by the rules and practices contained in the latest edition of Town Meeting Time and Section 41 of our town code. In keeping with our long-term town practice, each session of this town meeting will continue until the scheduled end of the session or until the article under consideration at the time is completed or a quorum is called and fails, or a motion for adjournment is passed by a majority. Our scheduled end tonight is 11:00 PM. I don't imagine we'll be grappling with that, but famous last words. Our past practice has been to allow non-registered voters into the hall at the start of the meeting. Typically, these people are non-resident town employees, members of the press, students from government classes, and the like. All registered, all non-registered voters can be identified by the white wristband with red stars, and they will be not allowed to speak unless approved by the hall. So voters are red, non-voters are white with red stars. The non-voters present tonight are Heather Elker, Board of Health, Brian Ballantyne, Treasurer, Jack Battles, Town Meeting Staff, Amy Berry, Assistant Town Clerk, Matt Carreras, Town Meeting Staff, Paul Sibelli, Board of Assessors, Charlie David, Town Meeting Staff, Tim Davis, Recreation, Trevor Dillman, Southborough Access Media, Ryan Donovan, Library Director, Karen Galligan, DPW, Vanessa Hale, Assistant Town Administrator, Carla McAuliffe, Town Accountant, Jay Montiel, IT, Trotier AV, I'm sorry, Heather Morris, Trotier AV, Marika Munsef, Economic Development Committee, Terry Newman, Southborough Access Media, Ken Paulis, Chief of Police, Mark Purple, Town Administrator, Corinna Quinn, Planning Board, Town Planner, Ellie Shea, Town Meeting Staff, Jay Tallerman, Town Council, and Sean Waite from In Media, who is our vendor that brought us all this that you see up here today. If there are no objections, we welcome these people here tonight. Do I have the consent of the hall? Any objection to those non-voters being here with us tonight? Seeing none. Our bylaw requires me to define the bounds of the hall. Tonight, all of the seats in this gymnasium, as well as the aisles between them where the microphones are, are within the bounds of the hall, and all voters must be within those bounds to have their vote counted. In the auditorium, the auditorium seats and the aisles in the auditorium are within the bounds of the hall. Like I have observed with every town meeting I have moderated, your Board of Selectmen, your Advisory Committee, and your Town Administrator have performed admirably on our behalf to put written materials and recommendations before you tonight. Other folks have as well, and I hope everybody was able to pick up not just the warrant but the other informational handouts that were available on the tables as you checked in. Meanwhile, as with our past two meetings, I'm shocked to still say, tremendous consideration for your safety and detailed logistical planning have gone into tonight's meeting. I'm grateful for the advice of our Board of Health, chaired by Chelsea Malinowski, as well as our Public Safety Chiefs, Fire Chief Steve Achilles and Police Chief Ken Paulis. And on the logistical side, full credit for the careful selection and equipment layout of our site tonight goes to our town clerk, Jim Hegarty. And now a few logistical notes before we get started. Given our space constraints and our COVID restrictions, we will do without a large video screen tonight, so you do need to rely on your printed materials. Now, don't be fooled by this. This large screen behind me is strictly a video feed. It's showing us right now if and when the other room, the auditorium, someone rises to speak or we need to otherwise have video on the auditorium, that will be projected up here. But video projection is all we do with this screen. So that's, that's why I say what I say about relying on your printed materials and the motions that are made on the floor. As I'm sure you well know, coming in, everyone in the hall tonight must remain masked at all times per the guidance from our Board of Health, including while seated. In addition to our masks and socially-distanced setup tonight, we also have an air circulation mechanism in place again to maximize our COVID defenses. Thanks to Mr. Hegarty for that. It's hard to see, but the doors going out are sucking air out of here as it comes in from the back. Tonight's proceedings are being recorded for posterity by the fine folks at Southborough Access Media, and we thank them as well. Any motions, explanations will be made from the podium to my left. Again, our video screen is solely for access to the overflow space. It is not a presentation screen. If anyone would please silence your cell phones if you haven't done that already. And a little bit about the layout of the room. The town clerk's office, represented by your town clerk, Jim Hegarty, Assistant Town Clerk, Amy Berry, Town Council, Jay Tallerman, to my left, are all up front with me. Your Board of Selectmen and your Advisory Committee are in chairs here immediately in front of me. And with the exception of Mr. Tallerman and Ms. Berry, all are, all of them are registered voters, just like you and me. But nevertheless, it's good to remind all of you that the primary and most prominent function of town meeting doesn't occur up here. It occurs out there. Thus, as we proceed through the warrant tonight, any town meeting member can go to any of the microphones, state their name and address, especially with masks. Many of you that I might otherwise recognize I may not, don't be offended. State your name and address and speak to the current motion or ask a question. Any town officials who wish to be heard as part of the debate will wait in queue to speak at a microphone, just like everybody else. All questions should be directed through me, and no one may speak until recognized at a microphone by me. This includes calls to move the question. The only exception is a question of privilege or a point of order, and those are limited exceptions. If you wish to raise a point of order, you still must rise and be recognized by me. As we work through the warrant tonight, before each vote, I will remind you of the quantum of vote necessary to pass each proposal. Most will be a simple majority vote, some will be two-thirds, and then I will call for the vote. If I can determine the prevailing vote from here, I will announce it, including declaring a two-thirds majority. If at least seven voters rise to question my assessment of any vote, or if I deem it too close to call, then I will ask the tellers to come forward to count the individual votes. With that, I have examined the call of the town meeting, the receipt of the officer's return of service for the posting, and the return of the mailing. Under our rules, the moderator, the moderator must read the entire warrant, either at the beginning of the meeting or prior to the motion introducing each article, unless a motion is made to dispense with that reading. Therefore, I move to dispense with the reading of the call of the meeting and the officer's return of service and to waive the reading of the separate articles of the warrant. Is there a second? All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed. So that motion carries. We can move to Article One. Article One, Ms. Rosenblum. If you don't mind, sure. No rush.
Betsy Rosenblum, five, Strawberry Hill Road. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can I take off the mask while I talk?
I can hear you fine if it's okay with you.
It fogs on my... No problem. We'll get through it. Okay. Good evening, town meeting members and visitors. I am the Chair of Personnel Board. I move Article One as printed in the warrant. Just a couple of words.
Does that receive a second? Ms. Rosenblum.
Thank you. Just a couple of words. The Personnel Bylaw, also known as the Salary Administration Plan, or SAP, sets forth terms of employment and a classification and compensation system for town employees who are either not in a union or who do not have an employment contract. It is the job of the Personnel Board to interpret and administer the Personnel Bylaw. As part of this duty, from time to time, we receive requests to add new positions to the SAP. We had such a request this summer. The Town Administrator and Assistant Town Administrator, acting on behalf of the IT Department and the Board of Selectmen, brought us a request to add a second position to the IT Department. This was supported by the IT Manager and by your Municipal Technology Committee. Under the SAP, two things have to happen before we can add a position. One, the Personnel Board has to grade and rate the position within the SAP. We did that over a series of meetings this summer. We voted to put it in grade seven of Schedule A, the Full-Time Schedule. And the second thing that has to happen is that you all have to approve it. So with that, I will take any questions about the process. If there are any questions about the position itself, the merits of the position, or the cost of the position, I will defer to the proponents. And I am finished. Thank you for your time and attention.
Any question or discussion regarding Article One? Okay, seeing none. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Rosenblum.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
Article Two, Ms. Brascio.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry. Good evening, everyone. I move that the town vote to amend the town's general and zoning bylaws by changing the term Board of Selectmen to Select Board as printed in the warrant.
Does that receive a second? It does. Ms. Brascio.
Thank you. The name change is to promote inclusion and diversity in Southborough's town government. The board will remain under the current confines of the Board of Selectmen Authority. Over 100 towns in the Commonwealth have already adopted the name change, as well as the Massachusetts Selectmen's Association, of which I am a member of, made the change to Select Board Association in January of 2020. And lastly, many local towns have done this, including Milford, Mendon, Hopkinton, Bolton, Berlin, Stowe, and Sudbury. Thank you.
Okay, any comment or question regarding Article Two? A little peculiarity about Article Two. Because it does technically amend, if passed, it amends the zoning bylaw, which normally requires a two-thirds vote. We're going to call for a two-thirds vote on Article Two and see where we go. If we get it, we're all set. If not, we may split the question as between the general bylaw and the zoning bylaw. And if that, if any of that was unclear, let's just see where we are on the vote. So seeing no comment or question either about what she had to say or what I had to say, all in favor of Article Two, please raise your cards. All opposed? I declare a two-thirds majority.
Thank you.
Article Three, Ms. Malinowski.
Mr. Moderator, can I have Dr. Medina join me for this one, please?
Well, let's get the motion on the floor, and then when you're ready, we'll bring him up.
So Article Three, I move to amend the FY 2022 budget as voted under Article Seven of the 2021 Annual Town Meeting on May 22, 2021, by raising and appropriating the sum of $99,682 to be spent under Budget 542 and Budget 910, as described in the printed warrant, and further to reduce the MWRA Assessment line item in the FY 22 Water Enterprise Fund by the sum of $150,000.
Does that receive a second? It does?
Mr. Moderator, I have an amendment.
Okay, have you submitted that to the clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Jim, you, or Amy, you have an amendment to Article Three ready to go? Do you have a copy of it over there?
Me?
Okay, go right ahead then.
Okay. So I move to amend the main motion of Article Three by removing all references to Budgets 542 and 910 in the warrant.
Does that receive a second? It does. Can you speak to that a little bit, please?
Okay, so I'm going to give a brief explanation and then have Dr. Medina come up and speak a little bit about the direction here. So I essentially struck the $99,682,000 increase for the Board of Health and the Benefits Budget. There was consensus amongst the Advisory Committee and the Board of Health to use other funding sources for the remainder of the FY 22 year. So this will not be hitting the tax rate this year. So that, that was removed. And I'll ask Dr. Medina to come up and speak for a minute about the future of the Board of Health and why we are going, why we are changing the funding mechanism for this year.
Thank you. So in June of 2019...
I'm sorry, sir. Just for those who don't know, could you just introduce yourself?
Oh, sure. My name is Safdar Medina. I live in 19 Southwood Drive, and I'm currently serving on the Board of Health as the Vice Chair. So in June of 2019, our State Department of Public Health published a report for recommendations of improved effectiveness and efficacy of local public health protections. Only three of the 359 municipalities met national standards. I'll quote from its conclusion. "Every day, about 200 lives begin in Massachusetts, another 150 end. Between those two bookmarks, no other entity is more important to ensuring the health and well-being of residents than their local health departments. So we, as a board, feel it is imperative for our citizens to understand our long-term goals. For Southborough, the COVID-19 pandemic brought to life how understaffed our Board of Health was. Federal money allowed the funding of our current public health director and public health nurse. They have worked tirelessly, not just on COVID-19-related items, but on other health issues needing immediate attention. They are our true unsung heroes. And we know public health work saves lives. Our department provided vaccinations at our senior center, made arrangements to vaccinate homebound residents, helping our town's most vulnerable citizens. Collaboration with neighboring towns led to successful vaccination of our area's adolescents. Both our director and public health nurse serve on our school district's medical advisory team, providing valuable insight in decision-making, allowing us to keep our children safely in school. They assist our district nursing staff in contact tracing and testing. They serve on the Northborough/Southborough Substance Prevention, Substance Use Prevention Coalition, working with youth and family services and other stakeholders. Using shared services with other towns, they are making us healthier through food and building inspections and tobacco control measures. So as we plan for the years ahead, we must realize that the talented public health team we have must be a part of our long-term goal in keeping Southborough residents healthy. We need our basic public health infrastructure to remain strong within a regional collaborative network, sharing services with neighboring towns when needed. We need to be prepared to deal with any future threats because prevention work can never really cease. Every outreach effort that they make, whether it's on vaccinating against illnesses, tobacco control, substance use, injury prevention, and ensuring the safety of our water or food and buildings, will greatly improve the quality of all our lives and ultimately save lives. So we need your support at the next town meeting as we move forward to accomplish this vision. And I'll end with Ben Franklin. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Thank you.
Thank you. If I, if I'm correct, Ms. Malinowski, the substance of that is also available on the pink sheet that was on the tables out front?
Uh, yes.
Is that correct?
Yes. So there is a report.
So question or comment on the motion to amend to strike references in the article to the 99,682 and Budgets 542 and Budgets 910? Yes, sir.
John Butler, for Davis Road. Do I understand correctly that the amendment that we're going to vote on would remove the proposed, the increase in the budget that was proposed? And might understand that that speech we just heard was in support of removing the increase in the budget?
So the, you're correct in what the amendment would do. It would remove the request for increase. And the, what Dr. Medina just spoke about was that even though we're removing the budget increase, that does not diminish the need for the public health staffing, which will be coming for FY 23 budget.
But there's some unexplained reason why we don't need this now. Could you explain why? I'm not that I'm advocating it. I just, we haven't heard anything about why the amendment should be passed.
So there was consensus reached amongst Advisory and Board of Health. Board of Health cares that the current positions are paid for. And Advisory does, does not want to increase taxes, so we're trying to, we're going about another way to get it funded.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comment or question on the motion to amend? All right, so the motion to amend requires a majority vote, at which point we will go back to the main motion. All those in favor on the motion to amend as presented by Ms. Malinowski, please raise your cards. All opposed? All right. Motion pa, motion to amend passes. We're now back to the main motion, which in substance contains a reduction of the MWRA Assessment by $150,000. Any comment or question about that? All right, all those in favor of, this also requires a majority vote, all those in favor of the amended Article Three, please raise your cards. All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Article Four. Mr. Malinowski. I can't help myself. Who's watching the kids?
My mother, and I'm on a clock, so I'm going to make my motion.
Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash $30,000 for engineering capital feasibility studies and $85,000 for IT server replacements.
Does that receive a second? It does. Mr. Malinowski.
This article is trying to accomplish two things. First and foremost, the funding source is free cash. This will not impact the tax rate for FY 22. It's going to use available cash that's currently available to the town. There are two articles that, two items that make up this component. The $30,000 relates to capital feasibility studies to enable the Capital Planning Committee's continued research and diligence around all town-owned facilities, including collaboration with our school committee to enable our progress to bring back a comprehensive capital plan that we've been working through since our formation about 18 months ago. The reason for asking for the funding related to that now is that there may be needs for the funding that would be subject to a presentation to our new Select Board for funding certain aspects of our analysis so that we could bring a comprehensive proposal back to town meeting. Without this funding, we would be forced to wait until July 1 of next year and could potentially stall our progress. The second piece relates to IT servers specifically for our police and fire departments. The main reason that these are being brought forward now is, one, a portion is a correction of a article that had support at the Springtown Meeting for approximately $40,000, and a secondary component will allow for the actual installation of these servers. I'll defer any comment specific to the technical specifications to the town's IT manager, but would say the Capitol felt it was very important to bring this analysis forward and servers forward now as opposed to waiting till July 1 to the end of useful life of the asset. Happy to take any questions.
Can you just remind everyone what your role is here?
I'm currently Chair of the Capital Planning Committee.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Comment or question about Article IV? Okay, seeing none, this requires a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? Motion carries. Article V, Mr. Dennington.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $25,000 from free cash for the purpose of funding a comprehensive traffic study as listed in the printed warrant.
And just please remind everyone who you are.
I am Andrew Dennington from the Board of Selectmen 10 Carroll and Terrace.
Thank you. Does the motion receive a second? It does. Mr. Dennington.
So Article V relates to recent requests for truck exclusions on local roads. And under mass DOT regulations, in order to approve such a truck exclusion, the town would need to identify an alternate route for trucks to travel between the beginning and end of the excluded road. As we have gotten into this process, we've seen that we have a existing patchwork of local truck exclusions. And we have a concern that if we approve requests on kind of a localized basis, it may move traffic, push truck traffic from one area to the other. So we thought it would make sense to have a comprehensive traffic study to identify how trucks are traveling through town, and that would better inform a decision about how to respond to local requests for truck exclusions.
Thank you. Any comment or question on Article V? Sean, there's one in the auditorium. Can you flip it?
I'm Jonas... Try again.
Okay, let's try it again. I'm not, hold on, I'm not hearing you. Do we have audio? Hold, hold on a second, please, sir. John, what do we think?
Okay, how about this?
That's good. Go right ahead.
Awesome, thank you. Yep, I'm Jonas Lindem, 39 Flag Road. So I commend Mr. Dennington for bringing this up. I'd like to get more information on what's included in the $25,000, such as which roads are involved, is it covering the full town, and other details that you have on this quote.
All right, I'm going to apologize. I'm not hearing that at all. I don't know if anybody else is. So can you, maybe, then maybe it's just where I'm standing. So what was, what was the question then, sir, or the comment?
Okay. Mr. Moderator, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Yes, so let me just quickly repeat. Mr. Dennington, I'd like to understand specifically what's included in this $25,000, which roads does it include, and also have you received several quotes? It sounds like $25,000 is a lot of money, as well as there's been several traffic studies around town already that might be able to be leveraged so we can save this stance. Thank you.
Okay, so the question is, what are we spending the $25,000 on? Have you received several quotes? We've already done a lot of studies. It seems like this money could be better spent. That's the gist of the comment, as I heard it.
So first, yes, it is intended to cover the entire town, the flow of trucks going through the entire town. Second, no, we did not receive multiple biz, in part because this fell below the threshold for the public procurement requirements for going through that process. And part of the reason why this proposal was attractive is that the firm doing this is the same firm that worked on the Main Street reconstruction project. So I don't know if that has answered all of the questions that were asked, or...
It appears to have. The gentleman has, has left the mic. Any other comment or question? Yes, microphone one.
Freddie Gillespie, 78 Southville Road. I notice on our warrant, it says Advisory Committee Recommendation at Town Meeting. The one we just voted before had both selectmen and advisory committee recommendation at town meeting, and yet they didn't provide a recommendation. We're just going to skip through that. I want to get out of here as fast as everyone else, but I kind of expect to hear whether they're in favor or against.
All right. On this Article V, Advisory Committee, what's, what's your support? Advisory supports? Any other comment or question? All right, seeing none, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor of Article V, please raise your cards. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Dennington. Article VI, Ms. Cook.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kathy Cook from the Advisory Committee. Thank you for coming tonight and helping us get these articles dealt with. So I move that the town vote to amend Sections 9.8 and 9.12 of the Town Code to reduce the number of members of the Advisory Committee from nine to seven in Section 9.8, and to change the officers of the Advisory Committee to Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary from the current Chairman and Secretary in Section 9.12.
Does it receive a second? Okay, Ms. Cook.
So two things we're asking you to approve tonight as far as the advisory bylaw. The first one is to reduce the number of members of the committee from the current nine to seven. And we're asking you to do that for two reasons, one practical and one substantive. The practical reason is that it's very hard to seat a nine-member committee in Southborough. It's a small town, and we just don't have a long list of people volunteering for positions. We've had seven for several years now. It's worked well, and we'd like you to officially reduce the number of members of the committee from nine to seven. The second part of this article is to add officially the position of Vice Chair. We need a Vice Chair so that when the Chair is not available, we've got a Vice Chair that can run meetings. So that is the two things we're asking you to do tonight.
I see the Board of Selectmen supports this unanimously. Advisory's position is at town meeting, so I'm going to take a guess.
Advisory supports this unanimously, also, yes. Yes, yes, yes.
That's okay, that's okay. It's a good point. Normally, we'd have these things on a video screen, so it's a good point to make sure we clean that up. Any comment or question regarding Article VI? All right, seeing none, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Article VII, Mr. Hegarty. Okay, well, Mr. Hegarty makes his way to the microphone. I'm just announcing that there are five tellers in the auditorium. There's actually quite a few people in the auditorium. The five tellers are Roger Challen, Michelle Pulecki, Sally Waters, Nikki Morrow, and Sue Boust. Go ahead, Jim.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article VII as printed in the warrant.
Does it receive a second? Go ahead and explain, please.
This is basically housekeeping. A few years ago, we appended a section of the code, and we should have added the word "and" 14 days at least before the time appointed for a special town meeting. Basically, that matches the state code when you have to post notice to the citizens of the warrant. It's seven days before a regular annual town meeting, 14 before a special. We've been following the 14. This just is housekeeping. Doesn't really change anything. We've been following the rules.
Any comment or question on Article VII? Seeing none, all those, is a majority vote. All those in favor, raise your cards. All those opposed? Motion passes. Article VIII, Mr. Hegarty.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article VIII as printed in the warrant.
Does it receive a second? All right, can we give an explanation on that, please?
Massachusetts general code requires that every town hold an annual town meeting in the spring, and it has to be held within the town boundaries unless we've made provisions for an alternative. And this article gives the, the selectmen the oper, the option that if they were due to some emergency, like let's say we had a pipe burst in the ceiling here at the school or some reason this wasn't available, we could hold the town meeting in an adjoining town. For example, we could hold the town meeting at Algonquin High School on the ball field or whatever. There's no reason to do this except in an emergency, but this just gives the selectmen an option in case we had an emergency here.
Advisory Committee, physician? Advisory supports? Question or comment on Article VIII? Okay, seeing none, requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? All right, Article IX, Mr. Hegarty.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article IX as printed in the warrant.
Does it receive a second? Mr. Hegarty.
Again, this is another housekeeping issue. Previously, several years ago, there was a requirement to post copies of the warrant in a zillion places around town, on trees, almost all kinds of stuff. And I came before you and asked how many people that came to the meeting had come because they'd seen one of these postings, and not a soul raised their hand. So we simplified it. And one of the things that we forgot to do was to take out a requirement to post some other silly things. So anyway, this just clarifies it and brings in what our intent was before. To post it in, it'll be posted once in every precinct on the website and, and, you know, places around town like the transit station, the senior center of the library, things like that.
Thank you. Comment or question regarding Article IX? All right, seeing none, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
I recently attended an annual meeting of the Massachusetts Moderators Association, and the advice they give at moments like this is to have everybody stand and stretch. I think we're, we're, we're going to be fine moving right along here. So Article 10, Mr. Healy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaw by adding a new downtown district zoning bylaw as printed in the blue handout, not the green warrant, the blue handout.
So these were not on the table when you walked in? These were being handed out individually. Does anybody not have the blue handout and needs to get one? Can we make sure that happens before we go any further? Jim? Amy? I don't know who's handing out the blues. Let's get everybody a blue who needs a blue. I, I heard point of order. I didn't hear where it came from or who said it or...
Comes from the auditorium, Kelly Roney, 2 House Court.
Yes, sir.
It's my belief that this article is subject to only a majority vote because of new law passed in 2021 that amended Section 3A of the Zoning Act. And I'd like to hear from the town, town attorney on that subject.
All right, your mic, your mic was muted. Your mic was muted, but I...
The defining law. Would like to know?
Amendment to the Zoning Act passed in 2021 makes this a majority vote. Mr. Talaman, what say you? Do we need to identify the particular amendment, or are you familiar with what he's getting at?
I believe I understand what he's getting at. And while the, the bylaw that's before you does have some elements of what the state did pass, so to back up a little bit, Jay Talaman, Town Council. So earlier in 2021, to promote certain opportunities for housing and other types of development, the state amended the law so that a lesser quantum of vote would be required for certain bylaws. And there are some elements within this bylaw that do have some of those elements. However, there are a number of other things in this bylaw that don't match up, and the guidance from the state is that if it's mixed, some of the things that were preferred, plus some of the things that the state didn't discuss, that the two-thirds requirement would apply.
Excuse me, can, can you provide what those things are?
Well, there's, there's a large variety of them, but basically, any increase in, in housing density is one of the key elements that would warrant a conclusion that a mere majority is required. So if you had a standalone article that provided for certain zoning bylaws that would address that issue, or accessory units, or reduced parking requirements that might help facilitate some denser development in certain areas, then those might require only a majority vote. However, here, there are a number of other uses that are discussed, and when you do mix those, it then reverts back to the two-thirds requirement.
Well, one of the, one of the specific requirements, I'm not an attorney, so you're, you're going to win, but one of the requirements is that, is mixed use is one of the enabling features. Must be an eligible location, which the town center is. It's also transit-served, although very poorly. Must be in an MBTA community. Southborough is enumerated. So I, I'm, I'm not sure how the fact that we're trying to pass a mixed-use bylaw because of its details becomes a two-thirds vote.
Yeah, and there were some other elements, and there's no winners and losers here, obviously, but there are some other elements that were promoted in that legislative package that don't relate to quantum of vote, and there are still some other elements beyond that where the state has yet to issue final guidelines as to the adoption of certain bylaws near transportation nodes that we're still waiting to hear from. Here, again, the fact that it's mixed use may be preferred, but allowing some of the non-housing elements by a mere majority is not contemplated under that, that change to zoning.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, was there a second?
Yes.
Okay. And just before I go on, you didn't ask me. I'm not sure why, but I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen, Marty Healy, 8 Upland Road. So I'm going to be...
Marty, you've been around forever. I would have just assumed you would have done it.
Way too familiar face.
Thank you.
I'm going to have Julie Connolly from the Economic Development Committee come up and talk about some of the specifics of the proposed bylaw change in, in just a second, but Julie, you know I'm not going to be able to not talk. First, some, who, what, when, where, and why about why we're here tonight. The why, I think, is, or at least should be pretty obvious. The why, I think, is, or at least should be pretty obvious to anybody who has an occasion to drive through our downtown. I didn't realize these statistics, but there hasn't been anything done there, built there in more than 40 years. And a number of years ago, the Town of Southborough put together an Economic Development Committee, and one of the things, one of the areas they decided to focus on was downtown. And so an awful lot of research was done, a number of surveys were done about whether we want downtown to stay the way it is. I don't think that got any favorable responses. And there were a number of different responses about how folks would like to see it change and hopefully improve. And one of the main things was to take some steps to attract small businesses to the downtown area. Now, if you look at the blue handout, the last page, you'll see the area that we're talking about. And there's a little bit of change to the mapping, but we're talking about a very narrow, very small area.
Mr. Healy, let me just stop you right there. Did everybody get a blue that needed a blue? How about in the auditorium? Everybody have a blue handout? Okay, it looks like we're good. Go ahead, please.
So one of the main drivers was to look within, but also to look without, in terms of what other towns, comparably sized, smaller, larger, have done in Massachusetts and elsewhere, to spur economic development. We've got some decent examples nearby. Hudson is one that comes to mind in terms of what they've done with their downtown area. Obviously, a different community, but a town can take steps to generate improvements in their downtown areas. And one of the ways you do that, or one of the ways you can do that, is by looking at your zoning and determining whether or not there are some improvements, changes that can be made in your zoning that make it more attractive for the sort of development you're looking for. And one of the primary ways to do that is through what's called mixed-use development. And so one of the primary drivers of this proposed bylaw is mixed-use development. We'll talk a little bit more about that later, and Julie will talk about it. There are other things in there as well, though, because I know everybody here doesn't live downtown, because I do, and there aren't nearly this many people in downtown. And downtown is an interesting area in Southborough because most of Southborough is large, medium, small, single-family dwellings. That's most of Southborough. I think something like 92% of our housing inventory falls into that category. Downtown area is different than that. Downtown area, I did a quick count on one of my walks the other day, and I counted 26 multiple-family units within two blocks of Main Street. Downtown is different, and it's different in a good way from a development standpoint, from a mixed-use standpoint, from, in a lot of respects, what the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is trying to get towns across the Commonwealth to do to address climate change, to address density, to address traffic. And that is not have everybody driving somewhere, but have it be a walkable community. They call them 15-minute communities. The nice thing about the downtown area is that that already exists. And so there are some other enhancements from multifamily housing, particularly from a Shopsey perspective, that allow the possibility by special permit, not by right, and I'll get to that in a second, by special permit to allow what already exists in the downtown area to continue to develop there. Now, the thing about zoning is there are a lot of elements to it, and some of it's much more complicated than I really care to get a grasp on. But there are two main things that are driving some of the proposed changes here. For the most part, our zoning in the downtown over the last fill-in-the-blank decades, certainly going back 40 years, has been primarily special permit zoning. In other words, there's not a lot of as-of-right zoning. And what that means is that if you're a developer, if you're somebody who wants to build a two-story building, if you want to invest some money in some businesses, there's a process you go through, through the zoning code, through the planning board, for special permitting. That's what currently exists. That's been identified in the Commonwealth as an impediment to particularly mixed-use zoning, because it doesn't give someone who's thinking of investing money, which is one of the things you have to do to get development, but investing their money, because there's not certainty to whether or not what you are proposing to build is going to get built. Is it going to fit with the zoning code? And so one of the changes that, one of the main changes that Article 10 makes is it talks about permitted uses. And what that allows is mixed use. So if you're somebody who is interested in investing money, and anybody who drives from downtown knows there are some lots there, would it be nice if somebody invested some money? They're going to know, looking at this zoning code, if it passes, what they can and can't do, and what they can and can't do from a mixed-use perspective. It encourages, it incentivizes investment in the Town of Southborough, investment in the downtown district, investment in the sort of mixed use that the Town of Southborough, through every survey, through every master plan over the eons, have said they want. That's one of the primary drivers, as I said, as well as keeping the downtown the way it is. One of the things that's not in this bylaw is anything about money. This is a revenue-neutral bylaw. It doesn't raise any taxes. It doesn't cost anybody any money. It doesn't require anything to be done. It doesn't require any taxpayer in the Town of Southborough to spend a penny. It's completely revenue-neutral. So what did I say? Who, what, when, where, how? How? How did we get here? Well, as I said, the EDC put in a couple of years of work, putting together surveys and the like. And last fall, the EDC came to the Board of Selectmen and said, you folks are, you know, one of the elected boards in town. Will you take a look at the work we've done, and will you think about running with it to see if you can build a consensus in the town for the sort of development we think that will make improvements to our downtown area, create the possibility for economic incentives, and to make our downtown area a better place to shop, live, work, walk, bike? And I went back and I counted, and between September of 2020, and we're now right at the beginning of November of 2021, there have been more than 40 public meetings, public hearings, public discussions by the Board of Selectmen, by the EDC, by the Planning Board, across the board, with the opportunity, and a number of folks took advantage of that opportunity, with the opportunity to weigh in on the proposal that we hired a consultant for who knew zoning lingo and the like, and put together this draft, and then it was fine-honed through, as I said, more than 40 public meetings, hearings, presentations, and the like. And that's how we came up with the product, which, and I don't know, Kathy, you can tell me if you all have changed your mind, but as of last week, there were the Board of Selectmen unanimous, the Planning Board unanimous, the EDC unanimous, and at least as of last week, advisory was, I think, 6-1 in favor. That is, anybody who's spent any time in Southborough, the idea that of 23 or 24 folks on a board or committee, that you get all but one supporting an initiative, I think speaks volumes for the amount of work that went into this and for the good that those representatives, elected and appointed of the Town of Southborough, believe that it will do for our downtown area and for some economic development in the, on and around Main Street. So with that, Ms. Connolly, you want to fill in all the blanks I left?
Good evening. Thank you, Marty. I'm Julie Connolly, 26 Granual Road, and I'm a member of the Economic Development Committee. Marty covered a lot of the bases, so I won't take up too much time, but I just want to talk a tiny bit about the background, why this came to be, why now. The current zoning bylaw, as it pertains to the downtown, is over 60 years old, which is fine. Zoning's not supposed to change all the time. There have been a few slight amendments, but the substance of what's there is over 60 years old. That means that a lot of the language that's in there is either incredibly outdated or completely irrelevant at this point. Marty talked a little bit about mixed use. The mixed-use provision in the current bylaw will allow you to have a night watchman over your printing press, but will not allow you to have an apartment building over a coffee shop. So there are some things that need to change. In 2008, the town put together a master plan, which is sort of our vision for the future. We're actually working on another one now. You're supposed to do them about every 10 years. And one of the major recommendations from the 2008 master plan was to revise the zoning downtown specifically to include mixed use, which encourages sort of a vibrancy of community by allowing residential and businesses to be together and brings in money, investment, and, you know, really makes the downtown the heart of the community. Since 2008, that didn't happen, but multiple studies that have been paid for by the town, by the taxpayers, have said the same thing again and again, that the current zoning bylaw is an impediment to mixed use. And we know that also because, as Mr. Healy pointed out, no new development has occurred since 1978 downtown. As a member of EDC, anecdotally, for the past several years, I had my friends and neighbors asking me, and I know other members of the committees have had this experience, what's going on with downtown? How can we make it better? What can we do to, you know, why is there a vacant lot on a primary corner of downtown? Why are there so, you know, why is there so few businesses? Why can't it be a little bit prettier, a little bit better? So that was sort of the catalyst for, well, what do you mean? What do you want? That's the question we asked. So we put together a survey in 2017 in the fall, so that was about four years ago now, and we found out that of the 427 respondents, 90% were in favor of more restaurants. 67% were strongly in favor of more, like, shopping, commercial retail businesses. We heard, there were a lot of comments that talked about pubs, bakeries, coffee shops, ice cream parlors, things like that. Overall, 86% of respondents said they were dissatisfied with the current state of the downtown. So how we got here, as Mr. Healy said, this was an amazing effort of collaboration between the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, the Shopsey, the EDC, and the residents, both ones who live directly downtown and people who live in other parts of town, weighing in on what was important to them, weighing in on their concerns. As Mr. Healy said, we've had many, many, many public meetings this past year, and many the years prior to that as well. Just since, just in the past six months or so, we've had 11 public hearings hosted by the Planning Board. We've heard so many concerns, we've been really encouraged by the active participation of all the residents. So, and I have to say, one of my, I've been involved with the town for a while. One of my proudest moments was a couple of weeks ago when the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, and the EDC, in one meeting, along with members of advisory, I don't believe they had a quorum at the time, but the ones who were there, all supported the same bylaw. It was very, it was really great to see government in action, working in a positive way. So a little bit about what is changing, and I'll just point out a couple of things. By right, as Mr. Healy said, we're allowing certain uses by right. We zone for what we want, so based on the communications that we got from the public between the survey and many conversations and public hearings, we're allowing certain uses by right, which only means that a proponent of a project does not have to get a use permit. They still have to get all the other permits and approvals. You can't build a building without getting a building permit and all the other requirements, but you don't have to get this one additional use permit. That signals to a proponent who wants to put in a project that we're open for business for these uses, please come here and put these uses in. We'll help make it a little bit easier for you. Mixed use, as Mr. Healy said, that actually lines up with a lot of the town's goals, including diversity in housing stock, opportunity for affordable housing, and that sort of work-life play dynamic where people can live close to where they work. It encourages diversity in housing stock is good for our local economy, and that many people who support the many dynamic businesses and industries that are in Southborough and its neighboring towns are looking for a place to live, and not everybody wants or can afford some of the single-family homes in Southborough. So it's good for that as well. Design guidelines is a new addition to this bylaw. It's a tool that's used by many local towns and communities like Southborough. It was recommended by our consultants and agreed upon by all of the boards and committees. The design guidelines are a separate document that support the bylaw that are a little bit easier to change. They are sort of under the purview of the Planning Board. And this was another incredibly collaborative effort. The design guideline draft that is currently on the table was put together by Lisa Brascio of the Board of Selectmen, Bime Lutrell of the Planning Board, Michael Wyshon of the Historic Commission, and me from the Economic Development Committee. So we came together to make sure that things like, if you build a project, the parking would go in the back so that you don't have parking in the front. It encourages particularly use of historic buildings, reusing historic buildings, maintaining them, and having new structures fit within that scheme aesthetically and look appealing as we want to. So they do some other things as well, but that's sort of generally what they do. Another issue that had came up was that the current border of the downtown, as Mr. Healy said, there's a map in the back, the current border includes certain lots that are split lots. What that means is that there are some, about seven, I believe, properties that have a residential home on them, but the back part of the property is actually zoned commercial. This bylaw gets rid of that. It makes it cleaner. It clarifies that development cannot happen on the back of people's properties, so that that's another point of cleanup. Our metrics are clear. They include open space requirements, green space requirements, which were not there before. So we think that this is a huge improvement to what we have now. We think it will garner responsible development. It doesn't mean something's going to happen tomorrow, but it is an absolutely critical first step to opening the door to maybe having something in the future. So I hope you support it. We look forward to discussion. We look forward to answering any questions you have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to go right to the microphones. There's a gentleman in the auditorium who was first. Sir, if you could...
Sure. Can you hear me, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Okay. Sure. How about this?
Yes.
Awesome. Yeah, so I'm Jonas Lindon, third name Flagora. So thanks, Ms. Connolly and Ms. Healy. This is great. I have a couple of questions. So, Mr. Healy, you mentioned that you think this is going to reduce traffic in the downtown area. Won't this kind of development actually increase the inflow of traffic from other towns into Southborough?
You know, they have folks they call traffic engineers who do these sort of studies. And what they will tell you is that most of the traffic in a place like downtown Southborough isn't people from Southborough coming to downtown Southborough. It is, unfortunately, people from fill-in-the-name of the town, driving through downtown Southborough, getting to Genzyme. Don't want to offend anyone who works at Genzyme. But from a, and the reason why mixed use and some potential residential elements to this are important is because if you, I live in downtown. I don't drive to downtown. If you have a residential component, which is partially what mixed use is, you are reducing the amount of folks who are driving to that area. If you look, and it was somewhat serendipitous, the Boston Globe, actually, it wasn't the Boston Globe, the Boston Globe printed it. It was the Boston Foundation that did an extensive study on what's going on with zoning in various Massachusetts communities. And again, that's where I first heard the term 15-minute community. And what the study pointed out is the exact opposite of what's been suggested, and that is that if you build things in a downtown area, if you provide housing in a downtown area, that you are going to increase congestion. The exact opposite is true. The exact opposite is true. The exact opposite is true because you are not requiring everybody to drive to a place. You are creating a place that people come and park. It's not, downtown Southborough doesn't become a drive-through, it becomes a destination, it becomes a place where people live. That's what mixed use is all about. And again, it's not me talking, it's the Boston Foundation, I'm assuming they have better consultants than I am, who again, described the benefits. Also, from a climate perspective, because if you don't have everyone driving to a location, you're going to reduce the amount of emissions. And so, again, it's a, it's a small part to play for a place like Southborough, but bringing mixed use to a downtown area, an area where there already is, again, multifamily housing, is only going to be a benefit. Sir, you had a second question?
Yes. So it mentions in this closer? Okay. Sorry about that. It mentions that the minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet. What's the plan around septic systems and sewage for that? Can that fit there?
That is, that is up to somebody who might be interested in investing their money. Again, this, this zoning article is revenue neutral, it is waste neutral, it is septic neutral, it's got nothing to do with encouraging or discouraging any sort of septic activity. If somebody wants to invest their money, if they want to invest their money, their money in a, in a, in a, in a business, in a mixed use, in a residential that requires septic, then they've got to figure out a way to deal with the septic.
So if I read through this, all of these establishments require a septic system, kind of sewer system, right? Can we put that into this proposal somehow?
It's...
So, so what I'm concerned...
Let me just, let me just try to answer. I think the answer to that is no, and maybe town council, I, I don't think you can, you can put into zoning articles requirements for septic or sewage. That being said, there was no appetite, if that's the right word, there was no appetite for including any sort of septic or sewage element to this zoning article.
Okay, so my concern is that we won't require some kind of central sewage system in the downtown area that's going to take up space and smell.
That, that, that can't happen without an awful lot of things that have nothing to do with the zoning article. It would involve another meeting like this, it would involve the sort of permitting process through even more boards and committees that were involved in this process.
Thanks, Ms. Healy. And then just a final question. Can you confirm the maximum height and the number of floors for this, this proposal?
Julie, I'll get this wrong. It was a bit of a moving target. You want to address that? Maximum height, number of stories?
Sure, yes. The maximum height and number of stories actually have not changed from the current bylaw. It is a maximum of 35 feet and three stories maximum.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. All right. Tim, you were next, but it looks like you've given it up. Is that correct?
Tim yielded to me if it's all right with the moderator, because I just had a question about the accuracy of the text versus typo.
All right. On that quick thing, we'll go, go to you, Mr. Butler.
Yes, John Butler, Ford Davis Road. There is, there appears to be a typographical error, and I'm not sure how to interpret it, but I'm assuming that's what it is, on, under F-digit five, the number five, the paragraph marker is struck. Is that, does anyone, is that intended to roll it into four? Is it a typographical error? Is it striking out five? What does it mean? You had the mic, bud.
Ms. Brascio, very quick. Ms. Brascio was saying it's a typo.
So at five belongs in there as, as if it weren't crossed out? Thank you.
All right. Now we'll come over here.
Peter Lapine, 27 Parkerville Road. I move that this question be postponed indefinitely. It's not ready.
Well, we're going to have a little more discussion than we've had so far. I, I have, I have, I have the, the power to continue the discussion before we, and I assume you're saying you want to move the question, well, you want to move the question to a vote, or do you want to lay it on the table to postpone it indefinitely? You kind of mixed the two. Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to allow discussion to continue a little longer. Mr. Martel. Actually, yeah, and Mr. Roney, you'll be next.
Tim Martel, 7 Bantry Road, Member of Advisory. Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the motion.
Okay, what's your amendment?
I move to amend the motion by striking Section 174-8.12(c)(7) in its entirety.
Is there a second? All right, there's a second. Why don't you explain your amendment? And I'm, I'm aware that the clerk has that in writing already.
Okay. Marty had mentioned that 23 out of 24 board members supported this, and I am the one that didn't. But I will say, Marty, that...
He didn't hear you.
They can't hear me. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm the, I'm the board member that did not support this article. However, I will say that I do support mixed use, so in that, we are all unanimous. So Marty, I thought I'd add that for you. The part that I don't support specifically, of course, is C7. This is a mixed-use bylaw. It's an economic bylaw. It's not a housing bylaw. C7 specifically allows multifamily development for purely residential purposes without any mixed-use component. Now bear in mind, by removing C7, we'll still have multifamily as part of mixed use. We just won't have it as a standalone residential-only structure. I just wanted to make that clear. There are two simple reasons why I am moving to strike C7. The first, the first reason is that, in essence, C7 is a competitor to what we're actually looking for in this bylaw. The purpose of the bylaw is to encourage mixed use. C7 gives a developer an alternative. The developer can choose to put up a four-unit, five-unit, six-unit, up to 10 units apartment complex without any mixed use whatsoever. It's cheaper, it's easier, it'll make more money for the developer. And if what we're really after is revitalizing our downtown with mixed use, why are we putting a better competitor in the bylaw with it? Fact of the matter is, if we want to change our housing structure in the town, it should be its own bylaw, it should be reviewed and dealt with separately, and not part of what's supposed to be an economic plan. The second reason I object to C7 is because of the way it's written. C7 has had major residential site review stricken from the text. Now, today, you simply can't develop a purely multifamily structure in town unless it's a two-family, an elderly complex, or part of a major residential site project. I'm not certain why that last part was removed from the verbiage, but I want you to know that there are significant number of protections and regulations that are part of major residential site review that we're losing. Major residential site review requires a significant amount of open space, at least 30%. It requires that 1/3 of the dwelling units be single-family homes in order to maintain continuity with the surrounding community. It also has a significant number of environmental protections. There's a lot in there, and striking it from the verbiage as part of an economic plan simply doesn't make sense. So I'm asking you to consider, please, supporting my amendment to remove C7 so that we can actually get on with the conversation about how we can implement mixed use in our downtown area. Thank you.
Mr. Martel's amendment is on the floor to strike Section C7. Any comment or question regarding Mr. Martel's amendment? We already had a second on it. Comment or question about Mr. Martel's amendment? Ms. Brascio?
Good evening. Thank you. Lisa Brascio, 13 Oregon Road. I'm Chair of the Board of Selectmen, as well as Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. I'm speaking as a citizen. All due respect to Mr. Martel, I think he makes some valid points. I'm a little bit disheartened. This town has talked a lot about, for a long time, any opportunity you need for diversity in housing, for affordable housing. We've stood on the town common together and fought for diversity in people's lives as well as housing. And by taking this out, you are taking out an opportunity to have affordable housing in our downtown, in a smaller scale. And I think it's very unfortunate. It was one of the reasons that I worked on this and I supported this. I mean, at some point, this town has got to decide what's important. And if you're going to allow housing in a mixed-use building because that's where it's acceptable, where do we draw the line and say, as a town, we are going to stand together and we are going to afford, support any type of affordable housing in this town? We can't keep just kicking the can down the road. Southborough is a wonderful town, and it deserves to be shared by more than just us that are here. There's the opportunity for seniors in, in any type of affordability that may go into any of these housings. We're talking about up to 10 units with oversight from your Planning Board. Up to 10 units, if you look at the lots in the downtown, there aren't many places you could do up to 10. And then again, you have to take into, how many times have we talked, we've heard about tonight about wastewater and septic being an issue? Imagine somebody putting in a 10-apartment building and the septic that would be required for that. All I'm asking for is to please, please consider and leave this in and leave the opportunity for Southborough to show that affordable housing matters to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, hey, hey. No clapping, no booing, let's just do our business. Anybody else with regard to Mr. Martel's amendment? Yes, sir.
Hello, Matthew Deo, 260 Parkerville Road. I'm concerned about this particular section, C7, simply because of what's happened across the street from my own house, the bottom of Parkerville Road. A 55-plus development went in, and initially I believe it was supposed to be, not necessarily affordable housing, but relatively affordable. I think 500,000 was supposed to be an approximate range. If anyone has a different number, please let me know. None of these units have come in within 200,000 of that. Are we talking affordable as far as Southborough standards, the median income in Southborough? Are we talking affordable as in giving people a chance to live in a great town, go to great schools, who otherwise would never be able to afford it? I'm just troubled with how quickly that development across the street from me went from being a single home on the corner that was vacant when I moved in 18 years ago, to an empty lot, and a developer went in and looked for the opportunity to maximize the revenue on that property. And they did so brilliantly to their own benefit. Massive septic system in the middle, groundwater tables increased, I had two feet of water in the basement a few weeks ago, can attest to that. I'm just concerned that this might get out of hand, and I do wish for more affordable housing. It's the reason I got here. I bought the cheapest house I could find in Southborough, and I'm here. I, I hope people have the opportunity, but I don't know if Southborough is capable of managing an affordable housing opportunity responsibly, at least given my experience. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Roney, are you looking to speak to the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, please go ahead.
Kelly Roney, 2 House Court. I'd like to speak in favor of Mr. Martel's motion to amend to remove pure housing from the bylaw. Thank you. I'll have, I'll have later comments, so stay tuned.
All right. Further comment or question with regard to the amendment? Yes, Mr. Butler?
John Butler, Ford Davis Road. Thinking about Mr. Martel's amendment and listening to Ms. Brascio, I, I'm struck by the change in content as soon as it was moved to remove this C7. Up until that amendment was proposed, we heard nothing about affordable housing. This was all about mixed use. And also note that C7 says nothing about affordability. It merely says you can build 10 units in this area. The change in tone of content, as soon as it was proposed to remove this, suggests that another purpose was hiding within this, within this change to the zoning bylaw. What was hiding within it was, was what we heard for the first time as it was proposed, this change was proposed. And what was hiding in it was a hope for pure housing. And I think that that hope may very well be worth taking up, but it shouldn't be hidden within this larger context. It should have been put before the town as a, as an affordable housing objective. People should be here because that's what they want to consider, and we decide about that. But since we hear from all the speakers that this is about mixed use, and as soon as we propose changing this piece, as soon as Mr. is proposed to change this piece, then it becomes about affordable housing, and there's nothing affordable in the language, I support the amendment. Thank you.
All right. Excuse me, Mr. Moderator, because this involves something that I said, and I'd like to be able to respond to it. He's talking about the speakers and... Briefly, please. Well, what's the point of order? No, he can, he can have that mic. If he's responding to something directly, but be, please be brief, Mr. Healy. Yeah, John, first of all, I talked about it. I talked about it in my opening remarks. Secondly, you don't attend as many meetings as you used to. This was front and center. This, this was front and center. This was front and center in a number of meetings that the Board of Selectmen had, that the Board of Selectmen had with the Planning Board. We discussed this at great length. The idea that somehow we were hiding this somehow, to spring it on the, the town meeting is, is just a, a, a false narrative. All right. Thank you, Mr. Healy. In the auditorium, is this with regard to the amendment?
Yes, it is.
Please go ahead.
Craig Nicholson, 68B Flagrove, a member of the zoning board, but speaking as an Housing and affordable housing is an economic issue. So the fact that you're thinking only mixed use is an economic issue is wrong. Having people be able to afford housing and not be rent-burdened or mortgage-burdened allows them to have cash and income and net income available to spend within the community, so it absolutely is an economic issue. The fact that only four units are by right under this, and under G5, we talk about the fifth unit and plus being subject to our affordable housing restrictions, says that's always been about affordable housing. You need a special permit to do more than four units. You need a special permit to do 10 units. There's always been affordable component in this, and to think that limiting affordability doesn't increase the economic impact of the community is wrong. So I'm for, I'm against the amendment.
All right, thank you. Further comment or question about this amendment? Excuse me.
Mr. Moderator?
All right, I'm hearing a point of order from the auditorium. What is your point of order?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, if you recall earlier, there was a motion to postpone this indefinitely. I think we had enough discussion on this, and I move to postpone this.
Okay, well, I'm going to, I'm going to give you the same answer, I'm going to, I'm going to allow us to continue the discussion.
This is the second time, Mr. Moderator.
I've got the same amount of energy as you, sir.
We've had enough discussion.
Okay, well, I disagree, and that's my purview.
Can we go for a vote?
No, not yet. What's this point of order? All right, ma'am, you're going to have to come to the mic to, to give, to make your
The motion, Marguerite Landry, 134 Deerfoot, the motion to postpone indefinitely, if it's seconded, we could vote on it, and then vote it up or down, and then return to the warrant article discussion. warrant article discussion.
Okay, that's not a proper point of order. The motion has been seconded, and it will vote on it once we discuss it in a fair way. I am looking to wrap up on the amendment discussion. In fact, I'm not sure we have any further, anybody at the mics regarding the amendment. Okay, and how about in the, yes, okay, so, right here, sir, excuse me for pointing. Come forward to the mic.
Hi, yes, Douglas Krieger, 107 Main Street. Just a clarifying question about C7 for the amendment. If I'm reading it right, I know the original article presenters were talking about the difference between permitting by right and requiring special permits. If I'm reading it correctly, the original C7 is not allowing multifamily dwelling to exceed 10 units by right. It is something that would still require Planning Board approval for individual developments for that to go through. Is that correct?
Can I respond? Please, briefly. You are correct, sir. That was another focus of the discussion, because the planning board in Southborough, justifiably, has a terrific reputation, and putting them as a bulwark against a multifamily project that wouldn't fit in the character of downtown, that wouldn't fit in the character of Southborough, was deemed to be the best way to fulfill the multiple elements of the proposed bylaw.
Thank you.
Gentlemen at the mic, if I missed it, I'm sorry. Name an address, please.
Douglas Krieger, 107 Main Street.
Thank you, all right. Hold on. What's your point of order, sir? Come to the mic.
Mr. Moderator, good evening. Michael Weiss on 189 Cordova Road. If I'm remembering my Roberts rules, a move to table takes precedence and is not debatable. And I believe that's what these people are asking for.
Yeah, I have the power to not allow a move to table so soon after we've just begun. And we have a main motion on the floor that was moved. I held off on that. Now, we have an amendment that I'm hoping to wrap up on soon. I've got one more comment on the amendment, and then we'll do that, and then we'll go back to the main motion.
Yes, second up, this needs to be postponed.
No, 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 no. The auditorium is not recognized. The gentleman in the black mask with the dark top is my last comment with regard to the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Howard Rose, 2 Bantry Road. I would like to support Mr. Martel's motion. If this survey has come forth and everyone on that survey really wanted an economic growth and coffee shops and ice cream shops and business to limit that by putting it in some form of apartment building, I think is the wrong move. I'm not saying we shouldn't have affordable housing in town. I'm thinking if the goal is to bring our downtown back up into more, as Hudson was exemplified, then it should be struck at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
The...
Mr. Moderator, I was just going to speak to the amendment.
All right, last one on the amendment in the auditorium.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jesse Stein, I'm a member...
Be brief, please.
Of course. Member of the planning board and member of CHOPSY, just want to raise the point that at the moment, the town is at 8.6% of the minimum 10% for safe harbor from a 40B perspective. So we still have affordable housing goals to meet. And as Mr. Nicholson pointed out earlier, for every 10 units, for example, there would be at least two affordable units added to the inventory. So in the interest of addressing those goals, I hope that we can vote down this amendment. And also, speaking to the special permit process, special permit authority allows the planning board to monitor development rate in terms of preventing outpacing infrastructure, including the schools, and as well addresses traffic. Thank you.
All right. The motion to amend is on the floor. It's been seconded, it's been debated. It requires only a majority vote to pass, so a yes vote passes the amendment to strike C7. Obviously, a no vote defeats it. All those in favor of Mr. Martel's amendment, please raise your cards. All those opposed? I'm going to do it one more time. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? All right, I'm going to count it. Mr. Hagerty.
Yeah, please, the tellers, please come forward. I think they are, Jim.
If you're not in the seat, your vote won't be counted. I will take the same order at the mic after we take this vote. Folks, I'm informed by the clerk that an additional teller's been sworn for this room. Tellers are ready. All those in favor of Mr. Martel's motion, please raise your cards and keep them up Okay, folks, you can put your cards down. Are they going to count from the back now? All right, all those opposed, please raise your cards. The folks that were at the mic when we called this vote can come back. All right, the motion to amend required a majority vote. Yes, yays, we're 100, nays, we're 148. So the motion fails. So we are back to the main motion on the floor. And, sir, you were next. Kelly, I'll come to you after that. Microphone two.
Sure. My name is Paul Carter.
Kelly, I'm sorry.
Yeah?
Okay, go ahead, sir. Microphone two here in the gym.
My name is Paul Carter. I live at 6 Hillside Avenue, which is the small neighborhood behind Main Street Bank. I'm an abutter to the proposed Business Village District. I've lived in Southborough for almost 30 years. We also lived at Carolyn Terrace, Cordova and Maple Crest Drive. We moved to 6 Hillside Avenue so we could walk to the Southborough Village. I'm a professional civil engineer. I make my living by managing and designing the rehabilitation of bridges, roads, sidewalks, reconfigured parking areas and streetscape improvements. This includes projects like the Main Street project that was just done in Southborough. This is what I do for a living. One example is the town of Sharon, where I work with local residents and town officials to revitalize their town center. I served as engineering consultant for the Medway Planning Board and Board of Appeals for two years, reviewing all the proposed commercial and residential developments against the zoning bylaws and subdivision rules and regulations, and assisting the board in negotiating with the developers. I recommend, I always share my background so that you know that I understand in general the technical issues we're facing tonight regarding the proposal for a downtown village district. I recommend amending the proposed bylaw so that it provides enough flexibility for new businesses to make located in the new downtown village business district attractive, feasible and viable enough to make it happen. I recommend amending the proposed bylaw so that the three stories currently in the proposed bylaw be changed... bylaw be changed to two and one-half stories or 35 feet. The half-story provides for a slope roof and an attic normally used for mechanical equipment resulted in an actual two-story building. The amendment includes changing the maximum floor area ratio from 0.3 to 0.4 by right. In other words, the percentage of the lot that the building's first-floor area combined with the second-floor area would be changed from 30 to 40 percent. And the maximum floor area that would be allowed by special permit from the planning board would be changed from 0.4 to 0.5, or, in other words, 40 percent to 50 percent of the lot area. Why would the proposed Business Village bylaw actually reduce the allowed floor area of the new building when we're trying to make Southborough Village more attractive to new businesses to locate here? This amendment also includes amending the proposed bylaw so that the maximum depth of street-level commercial space is changed from 30 feet to 60 feet unless waived by the planning board. It's my experience that a small house is usually at least 24-foot deep. And some of our more beautiful houses are 60 feet deep, okay? Currently, the Firehouse Building is 62-foot deep. Morrow's Village Cafe is 40-foot deep. The convenience store is 51-foot deep. And the old post office is 48-foot deep. As currently written, the only property that could fully comply with this proposed zoning bylaw, as it is currently written, is the large property with the huge parking lot where Southborough Dental is located across from the old post office. Right now, it seems like the only time people out of town drive through Southborough is commuting on their way to or from work to avoid the traffic on Route 9. I think we want people to come to Southborough's Downtown Village because there are interesting stores and businesses located in the tradition of a thriving and vibrant New England town. Maybe even businesses, maybe even some apartments which are badly needed so young people and old people can stay in town. I only offer this because I love this town and want the town to have a downtown village center, not only just on Route 9 or Route 85, but in the actual village center. The exact wording of the amendment that I'm asking you to vote for is, do I have to write, say, "all the particular locations of where it's located"?
If you're moving to amend the bylaw, you need to put your amendment on the floor, yes.
Sure. So I move to amend the main motion by striking the words under Part IV, Amendment Article III, Use Regulations 174-8, Schedule of Use Regulations 174-8, A Height Regulations 4, Maximum Building Height 35, and Three Stories, by substituting the words "two and one-half stories," by striking the words under Part IV, Amendment Article III, Use Regulations 174-8, Downtown Schedule of Use Regulations 174-8.12F, Development Standards 5, Maximum Floor Area Ratio 0.3 as of right, and by substituting the words "0.4 as of right." And by striking the words under Part IV, Amendment III, Use Regulations 174-8, Downtown Schedule of Use Regulations 174-8, 12, G Building Regulations 3, after the maximum depth of street-level commercial spaces shall be the lesser of 30 feet or 60 percent of the depth of the building unless waived by the planning board, and substituting the words "60 feet" unless waived by the planning board, and deleting the words "or 60 percent of the depth of the building unless waived by the planning board. I appreciate you listening to my amendment.
Hold on, does that motion receive a second?
Second.
Second. All right. I think you've explained your rationale. What I heard, if I understood it, is you're looking for little shorter buildings with a bigger girth and a bigger footprint.
No.
Is that a fair summary?
No.
Well, give me one more sentence then, please.
What's proposed is something that covers only 30 percent of the lot or by the Board of Appeals, 50 percent. That is totally unrealistic for a downtown village.
So you're looking for bigger buildings? Bigger buildings? A bigger building?
Allowing, yes.
Okay, and shortening from three stories to two and a half?
Yes, and there's one other thing.
The setback, the depth of the building can be 60 instead of 30?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Receives a second. Question or comment on the proposed amendment? Ms. Connolly?
Thank you. Julie Connolly, 26 Granual Road. I just want to point out with regard from the change from three stories to two and a half stories, the design guidelines, I believe, and I don't have them in front of me right now unfortunately, but I believe that we do in the design guidelines specify that we want slanted roofs. So I do understand that as a point, but that is what we're looking for. I would not be in favor at least of that portion of the change to remove it from three to two and a half. I do understand your point, and I think aesthetically, you know, we want those slope roofs, so that is in the design guidelines.
All right, thank you. Mr. Roney, are you here for the amendment that was just proposed?
Let me say that there's quite a bit of overlap, yes. Kelly Roney, Two Houses Court.
Well, please speak to the amendment.
My neighbor, Mr. Carter, I will speak to the amendment. My bete noir in this proposed bylaw is the floor area ratio, which is, to my mind, weak sauce that'll kill any mixed use. And therefore, on the floor area ratio, I would certainly support for now Mr. Carter's proposal, although my proposal subsequently will be to delete it entirely. Thank you.
Meaning, your proposal will be to delete the floor area ratio requirement, not his amendment?
That's right.
All right. Anybody else on this amendment? Yes?
Ray Hokinson, 10 Main Street. Regarding Building Regulation G, Number 3, Maximum Depth of Street-Level Commercial Space, be lesser of 30 feet or 60 percent of the depth of the building unless waived by the planning board. There is a planning board option to waive it. I did raise this same issue in one of the many meetings, and I thought actually Don Morris was going to strike that. Basically, the issue here is it sort of precludes the ability of a building to be 100 percent business on the first floor. It restricts it to saying like you could only be 60 percent of the first floor of the building is a business. So I thought, you know, I looked at some of the basic numbers of what might happen in downtown and thought that was overly restricted. And I thought at the time, Don Morris said, "Oh, would you like to just get rid of it?" And I thought that comment was going to be struck from it. I see it still here.
All right, so you're in favor of the motion?
I did raise this issue. It's the same issue. I guess the get-out-of-jail card is that the planning board could waive it in that option. So I just wanted to say that this issue was raised before in the meetings in the past month or two.
All right, thank you. Ma'am, yes? Are you speaking to this motion? No. In the auditorium on this motion?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
Craig Nicholson, 68B Flag Road. I am in favor of the motion except for the part of eliminating it to two and a half floors. I think the third floor is necessary to allow for as much housing and ideally affordable housing as possible. And by making that a half floor, you eliminate that possibility. And I definitely agree with the expanding the first floor to be larger than 30 feet since none of the buildings in the area actually comply with it anyway. It seems pointless to enact a zoning rule where everything is already out of compliance.
All right, so I'm seeing no one else at the mics on this point. Mr. Nicholson, please stay there. Are you suggesting an amendment to eliminate the change from three stories to two and a half?
Yes.
All right, you need to make that motion now.
I move to amend the amendment by striking the request to change the maximum building height to two and a half floors and having it remain at three floors.
Does that receive a second? That's second.
I will go write that down.
Hold on, any discussion on Mr. Nicholson's amendment to the amendment? Don't worry, I'll get us all back where we need to be. Yeah, Mr. Nicholson, you need to put that in writing. Okay. In the meantime then, seeing no discussion on Mr. Nicholson's amendment, that requires a majority vote. All those in favor of Mr. Nicholson's amendment, please raise your cards. So when we get this, Mr. Nicholson's amendment, obviously we'll vote on that. That would then, depending on the outcome, alter the current amendment on the floor. We would then vote on that, either altered or not-altered amendment, and then we'll be back to the main motion. I mean, you all didn't come here tonight to reduce the water fund, right? I mean, this is why we're here.
Mr. Moderator, can I make a clarification or not at this point?
Where's that coming from? You want to speak to Mr. Nicholson's amendment?
I wish to make a clarification.
About Mr. Nicholson's amendment?
No.
All right, hold on.
On its way.
I appreciate everybody's patience. I will say that putting together a meeting like this with this room, with the way it's set up, with the auxiliary auditorium overflow, with the check-in process that we had, it's incredible amount of work over the last several weeks, and that's all to Mr. Hegarty and his staff and his volunteers. So your patience is very much appreciated. I can't even imagine where we'd be without that. Here we go. All right, the motion to amend is in writing. It's to strike the words "two and a half floors" and substitute the words "three floors." I've just heard advisory supports the amendment by Mr. Nicholson. Selectmen have a position? Selectmen support that amendment as well. Okay, so this requires a majority vote on this amendment to the amendment. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? Okay, that motion passes. So now we are back to the original amendment, which now does not speak to building height but speaks to floor area ratio and setback. Any further comment or question about that amendment? Yes, sir.
I just like to make a clarification. The substitution is 30 feet to 60 feet, and also importantly, or 60 percent of the depth of the building unless waived by the planning board. My motion proposes to delete 60 percent of the depth of the building unless waived by the planning board and only refer to the 60 instead of 30.
Yeah, your motion, the deletion you're looking for includes the words "unless waived by the planning board." Sometimes when you say it out loud, it's not so clear. But you read it that way, so you're looking to go to a 60-foot maximum versus 30, and that's it. No discretion by the planning board in that regard?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. Any further question or comment with regard to the now pending motion? Hearing none. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? One more time, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. We are back to the main motion with Mr. Carter's amendment. Ma'am, you've been waiting a long time.
Hi, Kamiya Spazey, 63 Richards Road. I just had a question, and somebody can answer it for me, is why the zoning map was changed to eliminate a few properties on Park Street? And one of the properties on Park Street is not labeled, so I'm wondering, I assume by the map, but it's not very clear, I'm questioning Zero Park Street is in the new zoning or out of the new zoning? So those are the two questions I had.
Who can speak to the map?
Is Julie out there? She's more of an expert on the map than I am. I can give you part of an answer. Oh, Julie's there. Julie, shake your head if I start heading off in the wrong direction. There was a great deal of discussion, both Board of Selectmen, EDC, Planning Board, about the lot. Ms. Connolly referenced it earlier. You know, small New England town, there are some oddities. And one of the oddities is some of the lots on Latysquama were split. And what this does is it moves those lots out of the business district so that they are not affected by the change in zoning. So that's the primary reason for the change in the map. Do you want to talk about Park Street? I think, I'm not quite sure of the question. The proposed downtown is the lighter pink, so I guess I'm not quite sure of the confusion.
Well, five Park Street and zero Park Street would be owned by the same property owner. So my question is, one of them in the zoning and one of them's out of the zoning when it's a split lot, five and zero, and they're across the street from each other? So I just wanted that clarification. No, it's a property.
Okay, but it's not technically a split lot. It's two different lots, unless I'm missing?
I think that's the answer. Well, that is the answer. I don't think it's the answer. It is the answer. The fact that it's a similar landowner doesn't automatically merge the lots.
So Zero Park Street is on the new zoning?
Correct.
All right. Mr. Roney, you're going to be it. I think after you go, we're going to have a motion to move the question. So you've been waiting. We'll let you go, and then we'll see where we are.
Mr. Moderator, I apologize to the voters for this, but I'm going to move an amendment, which you should have with you. The town clerk has it. In the mixed-use development definition in 174-2 definitions, I have a new definition. It actually, because of the structure of my amendment is to replace the whole thing, I'm replacing the first sentence with the same text. The development that includes any combination of permitted non-residential uses and permitted non-residential uses.
"The development that includes any combination of permitted non-residential uses and one or more dwellings within a single structure, provided however that the inclusion of two or more dwelling units in a mixed-use development shall not be deemed a multifamily dwelling. The total area of non-residential uses must be equal to or greater than the gross floor area of the ground floor, and no dwellings may be built below the ground floor." And then the second phase of this amendment deletes the proposed 174-8, 12F, entirely. That's the floor area ratio, which is essentially a cyanide pill for mixed use.
Mr. Roney, just to clarify, your written amendment indicates that the ground floor facing the street shall be used only for permitted non-residential uses. Did you eliminate that from your motion on purpose?
I was going to leave the builder to decide where to put the business items, but he has to put at least one floor level's worth.
All right, so your written, your written amendment does not match what you just proposed, so we're going to have to line it up.
My written amendment is exactly what I just proposed. If you would look at the attachment to the form that I filled out, I mean, I pre-wrote these.
Hold on a second, please. Okay, I think there's some confusion on the clerk's part. Jim, I think this, Jim, this page is, hold on, Kelly.
So if you've got it folded, that's the right one. It's the one that says "my amendment," like my South Borough, you know, my amendment.
Jim, this pa, this page is existing. What he's reading is that.
I have another one later.
This is exactly what he gave us. Right, right, and his amendment, "my amendment," is this, that's what he just read. All right. So Kelly, I beg your pardon, you submitted the original and the amendment together, and it caused some confusion.
Okay, sorry about that. Well, I was, I was hoping to avoid confusion, but apparently failed.
You failed at that, okay. All right, so please, it's not that long, please reread your amendment, just the amendment. You're, you're striking the definition of mixed use and you're, and you're reinserting a new definition, correct?
Right.
Which says what?
Which says the first sentence is identical.
Just read the, just please read the whole thing.
"The development that includes any combination of permitted non-residential uses and one or more dwellings within a single structure, provided however that the inclusion of two or more dwelling units in a mixed-use development shall not be deemed a multifamily dwelling. The total area of non-residential uses must be equal to or greater than the gross floor area of the ground floor, and no dwellings may be built below the ground floor." Okay? And then the second part is to delete the floor area ratio clause entirely.
All right, is there a second? All right, I hear a second. Question or comment with regard, Mr. Roney, do you need to elaborate any more on it in two sentences or less?
Yes, I, I think the floor area ratio negotiations were rearranging deck chairs on the Titanic, and in fact, what you need is to try to ensure, I mean, this has been in public debate quite a bit, try to ensure that residential and, and commercial match up fairly well, so that these buildings are profitable enough for a developer to build and will have the things we want in downtown South Borough.
All right, thank you. Comment or question about Mr. Roney's proposed amendment?
Comment? Come, over here. Hello?
Let me go out here first, Marty. Thank you, moderator, and thank you, Mr. Roney. I do appreciate your comments, and a lot of the points that you made were very, very heavily debated between the different boards and committees with a lot of input from members of the public. We had a pretty lengthy discussion about the sort of give and take about how much leeway we want to give developers to encourage development versus how we can make sure that, you know, we're getting the vision that we have. And I think part of that vision is having retail on the ground floor. So I would not support changing that piece of it. We want street-facing, ground-floor, commercial space. So I, I do understand and appreciate your comment, but I'm opposed to that. Regarding the FAR, that was probably the most hotly debated issue, or one of the most hotly debated issues among the boards and committees. And I completely appreciate your sentiments on that as well. However, based on the multiple communications that happened, the mul, the very, very complex debate, I'm comfortable where we are with FAR. I think that's what sort of the consensus was, and at this time, I would not stray from that consensus. But I do appreciate your comments, so thank you.
FAR is floor area ratio. All right, over here.
Just a brief comment in general.
Well, now, I got to confine you to Mr. Roney's motion to amend.
Yes, but I've, like others, have been waiting a long time.
Well, we're going to, we're going to deal with his motion to amend, and then we'll be back to the main motion, and you will absolutely have your chance.
Sounds fine, thank you very much.
Okay, all right. Anybody else on the motion to amend?
Yes.
Microphone in the auditorium.
Can you clarify what the motion is? I didn't get which section is the correction. Yeah, I think, there's a lot of people are confused, I think, so can we take it again? Which section is being modified?
Mr. Roney?
In case there are others as well, it's in 174-2 definitions, a new definition for mixed-use development.
Okay, thank you.
And then the second piece is, let's see. The second piece is 174-8, 12F. So it's on, it starts on page three, but what I'm talking about striking is clause five, which interestingly enough, has a strike mark already through it in the handout, so it ought to be perfect. Let me know if there's any clarification, further clarification needed.
All right, comments on?
Over here, Paul.
Yes, Marty.
Am I cleared? Okay.
You are, yes, you are recognized.
Kelly, you'll still talk to me when you walk out of the house, but I urge people to vote against the proposed amendment. I mean, Ms. Connolly referred to it. There was incredible discussion, negotiation, trying to reach a balance and make sure that we don't go too far in the wrong direction, but enough in the right direction. And I think we've struck that balance, and, and I worry that this might be a bridge too far. So it, let's stick with what, with what we've got, what we've proposed, defeat this amendment, and then knock on wood, approve the, the main amendment.
All right, in the auditorium next.
Yes, Craig Nicholson, 60 AP, Flag Road. I think the, the key piece of the current amendment on the floor is the ratio of residential versus commercial space above the ground floor, and allowing for that to be more flexible than it currently sits. I think the idea is to still ma, maintain a, or a good idea would be to still maintain first floor facing, you know, road-facing retail or commercial. And so I would ask the proposer if there'd be open to an amendment, or whether we want to address this as a, as another amendment after this one potentially fails. Yeah.
All right, comment in the, Jim, regarding the, yes, ma'am?
There were two things I was trying to accomplish. One was to provide residential above, above commercial, and the other was not to limit commercial on the first floor so that it had to be on the second floor. I also wanted to provide the possibility of an ADA-compliant apartment, so to leave some flexibility to the builder to provide that on the second floor, to provide more commercial on the second floor so that there could be an apartment on the first. I'm happy if residential is second floor and above, and commercial is all first floor. So if Mr. Nicholson would like to amend my amendment, I'd be fine with that, I'd support it.
Well, we're going to, we're going to keep going on comments here on the, on the amendment. Yes, ma'am?
Mimi Latrell, 19 Oregon Road, a member of the Planning Board, but speaking as an individual. I would encourage the Hall to vote against this amendment. There was much discussion on these issues. We were, the consensus was we wanted a small-scale, village-style development. That's why the floor area ratio is in there, to limit the size of the buildings, so it's a small-scale village scape. The reason the percentages are in there is to encourage commercial development and not just have an ATM and be all residential in a mixed use. So I, there was a lot of discussion on these, as mentioned by Julie from EDC, we came to a consensus, and I think that we should stick with the bylaw that we came to a consensus on. It makes me nervous doing all these zoning changes on the fly because you don't know what the unintended consequences will be. Thank you.
All right, further discussion on the amendment? I think we are, on this amendment, sir, or no? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, maybe I'm missing something. Lou Weinstein, 62, Charles Court. Is the amendment's concern that there's going to be too much commercial or not enough commercial? Which way is the amendment trying to push?
The amendment is trying to do two things, or maybe three, but in, in this instance, I, I believe, based on 40 years of non-development of downtown, that residential is required to make business use profitable, building for business profitable, and I favor that and something that Mr. Healy was talking about earlier, that 15-minute place where I can walk to, that Mr. Carter was talking about as well. And the only, the only tinkering was to allow an ADA-compliant on the first floor. I do think the first floor should be allowed to be entirely commercial, and then upper floors should be mostly predominantly residential.
I think the short answer is, the amendment Mr. He, Mr. Roney's proposing tends to favor residential a little more. On the amendment, over here? On the amendment? No. On the amendment in the auditorium?
Yes.
What's that?
This is Jonas, and a third name flag, so on Mimi Latrell's comments, why don't we just amend this amendment too then and say, hey, we don't want just an ATM on the first floor? I think this is, I like this proposal, but it's not ready for, for a vote, and that's what we've been trying to bring up with you, Mr. Moderator, three times now.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Connolly, I've heard from you quite a few times, is there something new on this?
Very small point of clarification, the commercial space is street-facing. We actually did intentionally allow that for ADA purposes. You could, on the rear of our building, put a first-floor residential unit that is permitted. I just wanted to clarify that for ADA purposes.
Okay. All right. Seeing no further comment on Mr. Roney's amendment, requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? Amendment fails. We're now back to the main motion as amended by Mr. Carter. I'm going to allow any new comment that isn't repetitive or belabored of what we've already heard. Ma'am, you've been waiting, go ahead.
This is definitely not going to be repetitive because it's opposing opinion. But I'd like to precursor question, has town council?
Hold on a second, please. Name and address, please.
Karen Hanlon Schimpkes, Lynbrook Road. This is, this blue booklet was just handed out tonight, doesn't match the green booklet. And then just a quick question before I give some commentary, has town council reviewed this blue booklet, the whole bylaw?
I want to just answer for you.
The answer is yes.
Yes. Yes, and he's offered his opinions, commentary, whatever.
He's not, he's not a town resident, he's not a voter, I'm not sure what your question was.
No, I mean, from the standpoint of town council, it has to be reviewed, so.
It's been reviewed.
Okay.
Presumably, if he thought it was out of order or somehow deficient, we would know about that.
Okay. I'm going to give a little bit of my background, as Mr. Carter did, just for the benefit of the floor. I'm in commercial real estate. I've been reviewing zoning as a zoning expert for 30 to 35 years, on a daily basis, in Massachusetts and in Boston, in high-dense urban environments. I will tell you that this entire package is just not ready for a vote. Nothing pains me more than to disagree with people who I very highly respect and I hold in high regard and fond regard, but I hope you find these comments helpful. There's nothing in this bylaw that says that multifamily housing should be rental or affordable. So if you're relying on that, and this has turned into an affordable discussion, I mean, it's just not there. It's not ready for prime time. This multifamily housing could be condo, may not be affordable, could be subject to high prices or out-of-reach prices, and probably will be if left up to a developer and not put in writing. To the floor, this is your meeting and no one else's. What's important here is do you understand what's happening? Can you envision what floor area ratio means in combination with stories density? In my opinion, this is far too dense for that small village district. Is it worth it to you, the taxpayer? The risks, the costs, that have not been discussed or addressed? The language that has holes in it? The mathing is too much. I'm uncomfortable with planning board being shoved aside to some extent. I'm uncomfortable with the amount of amendments and changes at the very last minute. Do you actually understand? Can you envision what can be built in that downtown, downtown area? I think if we took a poll right now, we'd have a majority, no, I don't get it. Why haven't we seen renderings of what can be built? That's a simple way to show the floor what can be built or not built. Traffic, real-life consequences, standing emissions, standing traffic, reduced response times for safety. This is one of the few east-west roadways going to Boston. Have you tried coming out of the west side of town to get to Boston down Main Street? This is going to be like putting a cork in the stem of a bottle. It's the wrong location. It's too small of an area. It may be a good plan, it may be something that people worked very hard on, but not for this location. Maybe, you know, again, there are more blighted areas that need attention. There are buildings that are falling down on Route 9 and are empty. In simple terms, the infrastructure does not support what's being proposed tonight. The cart is before the horse. The roadways, think about West Borough, try to get into West Borough during the day after 1:00. It's a constricted area. The topography, the geology, the hydrology, it floods. Okay? Oh, what are we doing about the, the lot that doesn't, you know, that looks, you know, very downtrodden? Well, guess what? It may not perk. It may not perk. That is a fundamental consideration before you draw up zoning, you get an entire town involved, and get everyone's time going. It's crazy. It's out of sync. We're talking about urban streetscapes. Okay, you look at Boston in Article 37, green buildings, climate resiliency. They've got commentaries coming in on November 19th about zero net carbon building. This is out of, it's out of sync with what's happening in the rest of the world. Global, you know, climate change is, is happening, that's the topic of the day. Green buildings, nothing in here about that. One week ago, this was the housing plan. I expect that to come from shop C, not from the EDC. I expect an economic plan to come. I expect an economic plan to come from EDC. This is not an economic plan, and it's not ready for prime time. Anyway, you've heard things about special permit zoning, permitted uses, revenue neutral. Let me tell you something. There's no such thing as revenue neutral. No such thing. There are costs to you that just haven't been discussed. There are risks. There are impacts that just haven't been addressed. I say, let's hold the phone, put this, you know, postpone this indefinitely, work on it so people are happy with the outcome. This has real-life impacts. No one knows that better than looking at controversial projects that have been the topic of the day in town. Every square foot of development generates traffic, and it is quantifiable. And it's not even been addressed or looked at here. Oh, don't worry about that. We'll get to that later. Worry about it. Sewage? Who's going to pay the operating cost of a sewer plant of the lots that may need it? Which lots do need it? Who's paying those operating costs? Like the police station, okay? We needed it. We built it. We paid for it. Did you understand you were going to pay $1 million in operating costs upfront? No, you didn't. At any rate, I appreciate very much the hard work of everyone involved, especially Tim Martel, Mimi Latrell from Planning Board. I deeply respect her opinions. This is not ready for prime time. This should be tabled. Thank you.
Sir, over here.
Mr. Moderator, John Thorburn. I moved to town here. I'm on Madison Place now. I moved out to Main Street 22, 23 years ago. The first place I visited was downtown. I frequent downtown. I love the fact that downtown is more or less owned and operated by people that have been here for years, Morrow's Market, Morrow's Restaurant. I'd hate to think that that would be replaced by McDonald's or some other place that is really one of the commercial things that we have in this world today. Across the street, the old firehouse where the piece of shop is. It had a charm when I came here. I'll tell you a little story. I was a fire chief in the town of Weston for 27 years. When I came here, I stopped into Morrow's Restaurant in civilian clothes. I was sitting at the counter, and a gentleman comes up in plain clothes and taps me on the shoulder, and he says, "Chief, I'd like to welcome you to this community. It's an honor to have you." And I... It blew me away. I asked the waitress behind the counter who that was, and that was Police Chief Caleri. The downtown has a feeling of the old downtown that should be preserved as still downtown. There's a good reason why it hasn't been changed in 40 odd years, and I'd hate to see a change now. I respectfully request that we vote this whole thing out. I thank all the people who put so much hard time into it, but I think it's unnecessary.
All right. Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator.
Anybody... Anybody left at the... I have four or five people at the mic here, most of which I haven't heard from on this. Anybody has anything new they want to say, hasn't been already said? Either way, I'll allow that, and then we're going to proceed to a vote. Yes?
Michael Weis on 189 Corderville Road. I'm the chairman of the Historical Commission, and I helped put together the guidelines for this. I want to explain to you why I'm going to vote no for this, even though I helped participate in this process. And it's very simple. What has not been discussed at all here this evening is the sewage issue. There was a report done by the EDC, a wonderful report that they paid with grant money, $100,000 for, I forget exactly what, that detailed exactly what is required to develop this area. And it's a pocket sewage plant. And the only place that this plant can go is on land owned by N-Star, which would have to be taken by eminent domain. Other than that, under our current regulations, there's only one lot that is governed by all these regulations, proposed changes, that we're talking about tonight. And it's owned by a private developer on the corner of Main and Newton. That's it. There's not another property that, under our current regulations, without building a $4 million sewage plant, that this will affect. I agree with Karen. This is way premature. The leadership should have come from the EDC and the Board of Selectmen to go out and find the $4 million, which is probably available in the federal infrastructure bill, raining money from Washington, D.C. And instead, we're spending hours here debating floor ratios for imaginary zoning. This is not real. This is an imaginary exercise to change the zoning for one single property owner's lot. And if that's the way we're going to go in town meeting, I'd like an exemption to build a 20-story office tower on Corderville Road. Because the traffic's already like New York anyway, so why not have a tower? It'd have great views. So, Mr. Moderator, can we move the question?
Second.
Anybody who's standing at a mic that has not been heard from, I'm going to allow, and then we will take our vote. And by the way, you know, the first motion to move the question was an hour and a half ago, and we've had quite a healthy debate since then. All right? I don't want to... I'm not going to be the one who says, "We couldn't have had this." This may well go down in defeat. And by the way, for those of you that think that a defeat of this article puts it on ice for two years, the fact that the Planning Board supports it makes that not correct. I just want to... That's not an opinion here or there. That's just a clarification of Section 5 of Chapter 48. So, anybody who has not been heard, and I see you in the auditorium, and you've been heard quite a few times. I know you don't feel like it, but you have. How about over here?
You heard from me. Two hours ago, I asked to postpone...
Okay, if you're at the mic to move the question, let's let the others forward.
Okay, Mr. Moderator. What happened to my motion? Is it pending, being heard? I made a motion two hours ago to...
Yeah, no, no. That motion was out of order at the time. I didn't allow that motion.
So, then I'm making it again. Peter Levine, 27 Corderville Road. I moved to indefinitely postpone this question.
I understand, and I'm going to...
Second.
I'm going to honor... I'm going to honor the folks in the line behind you and everybody else sitting out here. Okay? Couple more minutes at the most.
Thank you. I'm Claire Reynolds, 104 Main Street. I'd just like to speak to a couple comments that were just made regarding the sewer studies. Everybody should understand that the work that was done was paid for by a grant from the state. So there was no money... Somebody mentioned $100,000 for a sewer study? It wasn't. The town received a $50,000 grant from the Economic Office of Environmental and Energy Affairs. Part of that money was spent. It was $22,000, which was paid to an engineering firm to make recommendations. This was called a feasibility study. And what that is, is in every single... In every single study that you, the taxpayers, have paid for since 2008, which totals right now, and it's a running total, $200,000. 2008 master plan, $65,000. The ZAC, up to $100,000. And I still... I have more of the totals to support what was put together. The other part of it was somebody mentioned the 2 East Main Street property. That property, the engineer... The person, Peter Bemis' property, he had his own system designed for that. So that was not going to come out of anything that the taxpayers would pay for. In every study that was done, again, as you taxpayers are paying for, the recommendation was that the sewer problem or the septic problem in the downtown area had to be addressed. So you do a feasibility study to see what is possible. And for anybody who thinks that all of that money is going to go onto the taxpayer, then they should really see some of the grants that are available out there. This is... Was just a study, okay? And nobody is forcing any kind of sewage or money down to a resident, either down there or across the town. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. There's three more. Something new, not repetitive, ma'am.
Hi. Diana Bell, 24 Main Street. So I'm right in the heart of this proposed area. And I recently moved to town from Somerville, a very dense area in Southborough, obviously very far from that. I was excited when moving to town to find out about this downtown plan because, yes, downtown is quaint, but there, as people have said, there's many lots that are just sitting vacant. And I think that our town can become better. There's no... Just because this warrant is happening now doesn't mean that you can't have sewer also. So I'm just wanted to voice my support of this, and I think... I don't... I disagree with the notion that we're putting the cart before the horse. I just think this is all happening at once. So I just think this is a good first step.
Ma'am, is this your first town meeting?
It's my second town meeting, first time speaking.
All right. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Over here, please.
Bonnie Fannett, Middle Road. My question is about the wastewater problem. Yes, it is for a future town meeting discussion. But the issue I have right now, as a taxpayer in this town, is we're in the process of doing Main Street. Is the infrastructure being placed in the road to accommodate any future needs from a developer? Because my understanding of a surfacing of a road sidewalks, you cannot dig it up for five years.
Can we speak to that very briefly?
Yeah. The answer, Bonnie, is yes. I mean, that dominates our discussions in terms of what is allowed and not allowed. In terms of a developer, again, I'm... It is a... It is an absolute red herring to talk about the sewage issue. It's got nothing to do with zoning. I mean, honestly, if we were here talking about a sewage proposal, people would say, "Well, we don't have the zoning in place. Why would we ever do that?" You have to do something. To move forward, you have to do something. The something here isn't a question about a sewage plant. It's a question about whether or not the zoning is right for downtown. It's got nothing to do with sewage. If a developer comes down the road and needs to put in sewage, they can pay for it. This town is not being asked to pay for anything tonight. It is revenue neutral.
Mr. Healy, I'm not asking whether the taxpayers have to pay for an individual sewer requirements. What I'm asking is the infrastructure being put in Main Street now so that we don't have to dig it up? The piping, the water, under CSX, the train tracks.
Bonnie, we don't know what a project might look like. I have no idea. I have no idea what a developer might or might not do to address sewage issues for a development.
I'm looking at it as an enticement for this bylaw to be passed. If we have no idea, and we don't have this infrastructure in the ground, what is the enticement?
Again, I...
Mr. Moderator, I can answer that question.
Oh, somebody who knows this stuff better than I do.
No, no, no. Mr. Weis, and I'm going to let these other two gentlemen go. They haven't spoken yet.
I can answer Bonnie Fannett's question.
Well, I...
May I? It'll be two seconds.
Go.
The short answer is no. The Weston Report clearly says that we would have to negotiate with CSX, and it would require a major acquisition and rebuilding of a sewage juncture under the road. The answer is no. And to think that you're going to have this development without talking in a few years about spending $4 million is crazy, ladies and gentlemen. There is a ligature here.
Okay.
Don't deny it. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
You're welcome. Right here.
Like I said, a red herring.
Hi. Rob Anderson, 18 Atwood Road, member of the Economic Development Committee. We have been working on the zoning for two and a half years. We have brought in a consultant. We have worked with the Planning Board. We have had a design group. We have talked to the Board of Selectmen. We have had over 40 meetings. The idea that this is not ready for prime time is the same anger that I feel when someone says, "This is going to be too urban," because I know exactly what that means when someone says, "It's going to change it, is going to change the town." Change is necessary. And at this point in time, I hope people see that a little bit of development in our downtown can enhance what we have here right now. So I would hope that people take a look at the zoning, what the potential is, and say, "Yes, that's something that I can embrace in the community that I love so much." As a resident, that's how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, you have the honor of being the very last one.
All right. Thank you, sir. I want to address the...
Name and address, please.
All right. Paul Carter, 6 Hillside Avenue. I want to address the new comment that was raised, this gentleman, about sewer. Sewer is completely unrelated to this motion, okay? This has to come first. Sewer can't come first. And for your information, Tony Kwan has a $2.5 million wastewater treatment plant behind Reliant. That if you really care and have to know about sewer right now, go talk to him. This has got to come first.
All right. Thank you. I think, you know, despite how some of you may feel, I think we did very well. You know, there's a lot of you here tonight. There's a lot of you in the auditorium. This has gone about as well as I could have hoped, and I'm glad we had the diversity of thought and opinion that we did. Well worth it. At this point, I'm going to suggest we vote. This is a zoning bylaw change. Hold on, please. Sir, I assume you want to move the question, and I'm there in the auditorium.
No. There's a point of order, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes. What's your point of order?
Yeah. So you've been repeatedly asked that we want to postpone this indefinitely, and you have not responded to it. I'm the fourth or fifth person that's asking you this.
Okay. The functional equivalent of indefinite postponement is to vote it down.
This was over...
In other words, if we vote to indefinitely postpone...
This was over an hour ago, and you said we should have a short discussion.
Okay. I just told you what I thought of our debate during that time. I think it was very important to have it.
This is not ready for prime time.
Okay. And we've heard from you as well. Yes? Okay. Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which motion are we voting on, Mr. Moderator?
We are voting on the main motion as amended by Mr. Carter. It requires a 2/3 majority because it is zoning bylaw change. All right? At this...
You received a motion from me two hours ago to indefinitely postpone this...
No, no. We passed Mr. Carter's motion, didn't we not?
...long before any gentleman proposed amendments to this. What happened to my motion?
Okay.
400 people have come forward.
Just to review again what we are voting on. We are voting on the main motion as amended by Mr. Carter. Mr. Carter's motion was amended by Mr. Nicholson. We passed that. We passed Mr. Carter's amendment. And now, this is where we are now. If there's any question about that, you know, please ask me now. Otherwise, as I said, it requires a 2/3 majority to pass. All those in favor of...
I'm in open ground. I can't answer my question.
I can't hear you, ma'am.
Are you proposing a vote on an amendment or on the article itself?
I think I have the same question as that gentleman. Joanne Pearson, 101 Newton Street. We're voting on another amendment?
No.
Or we're voting up or down?
No.
Do we want this, or don't we want this?
Yeah, this is the big McGilla.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. No problem. No, it was...
Someone proposed...
Are these points of order, Ms. Latrell?
I just ask if you could please clarify what the changes made to the original bylaw on the blue sheet are, so we all know what we're voting on.
All right. Mr. Carter's amendment, as amended by Mr. Nicholson's amendment, changes Regulation 174-8-12-F, Development Standards Number 5, Maximum Floor Ratio. It changes it from 0.3 as of right to 0.4 as of right. That's one of the two changes. The second change is to 174-8-12, Section G, Building Regulations Number 3. The words "the lesser of 30 feet or 60% of the depth of the building, unless waived by the planning board" have been replaced by 60 feet. 30 feet is replaced by 60 feet. The reference to a percentage is eliminated, and the reference to "unless waived by the planning board" is eliminated. And that's the amendment.
Louis Kushner, 15 Fox Hill Drive. Can you tell us where the selectmen or the advisory recommend on this vote?
I'll summarize it. Correct me if I'm wrong. The selectmen are unanimously in favor. Advisory is unanimously in favor. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let me come back to that at the end. Sorry, Tim. Selectmen unanimous in favor. Planning board unanimous in favor. EDC unanimous in favor. Advisory is in favor six to one. Mr. Martel was the dissenting vote with regard to advisory, and he gave you his thoughts on it, and he proposed the amendment to C7. Yes, Ms. Luttrell?
Mr. Moderator, those votes were on the original article in the blue paper, not the changed...
I ask to be corrected if I'm wrong.
So, the planning board has not taken a vote on the changed article?
Yeah, I did not understand that to be the question. But, Mr. Kushner, can you clarify then if that's your point? You want a position on the amendment?
I can't hear you.
No, just on the original motion before us. Thank you.
All right, so Kathy, you guys can stand down. He was just looking for the answer I gave him. All right. Requires a two-thirds majority vote to pass. All those in favor of Article 10 as amended, please raise your cards. All those opposed? Please do it again. All those in favor? All opposed? All right, there's no way that I'm not going to count this. So, I, look, I appreciate everybody's patience. I do appreciate the process that got us to this point. We're going to count this vote. We're going to count it carefully. We're going to announce it to you, and we will go from there. So, please bear with us for a few more minutes. Tellers, please come forward. As a reminder, please be in a white chair to get your vote counted. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your cards and keep them up so the tellers can I see one set of tellers. Give me a signal. All set? All right, please lower your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. We'll tally things up. One thing I want to say now before we get the result, because the result doesn't change or influence what I'm about to say, which is that anybody here who's disappointed that we didn't kill this process two hours ago, I'm more than happy to chat with you about it if you want to come up at the end. Motion required a two-thirds majority to pass. The ayes were 182, the nays were 65. It's 73.6% in favor, so Article 10 passes. I do want to, I do want to thank all of you for participating in, you know, the best democratic process there is. Do I have a motion to dissolve this special town meeting? Second? All in favor? Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night.